Council ready? Good evening, council, staff and members of the audience. Welcome you to council meeting for Monday, April twenty sixth. Tonight's invocation will be led by council member Alan. Please join me standing for the invitation.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the opportunity to be here today to serve the community, to serve the town, Father, but to be your servant as well. Father, we thank you for all the blessings you've given to this town, this community and the people in it. I ask for your continued blessings, Father, that you'll be with us and guide us and direct us in conversation and discussions and decisions tonight. Father, we love you and we thank you for all that you've given to us and all that you bless us with. For these things, we pray.
Amen. Please join me standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Please be seated. Our time is seven hour one. Let me call to order the regular town council meeting of Town of Sunnyvale for Monday, April twenty sixth. For the record, all council members are present and we have council first item is announcement pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five fifty-one dot oh four one five. Council or staff may make announcements. Council, are there any announcements for tonight? Staff, are there announcements?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Miss Katry. Are you said none? Okay. Right, okay. So I'm going to close the announcements. Moving on to the public forum. Session of the council meeting. This is the time. Members of the audience may come forward and speak to the council on any matters other than legal or personal matters or items on the agenda. If you'd like to come forward and speak to the council, you may do so at this time. If you are joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. No one is coming forward from the chamber. Erica, anyone raising their hand?
No, sir.
No hands raised, so I'm going to close the public forum. Moving on to consent agenda item portion of items. Council, there are five items on consent agenda. Would anyone like to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? If not, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda items one through five as presented?
Motion to approve consent agenda items one through five.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman, so second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Eldridge to approve consent agenda items one through five. All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed, seven oh. Next, I, next is the discussion and action item portion of the agenda. Council, with your permission, I could pull forward item number eight. That is discuss, consider and act upon the independent auditor's report on financial statement for the twenty nineteen twenty twenty fiscal year. The reason is we have the, we have the auditor here. I just want to give him some early dismissal if, if that's your pleasure. With that, I could do offer to Miss Hopkins.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, ma'am.
I'd like to introduce Frank Conway with Foxford, and he's here to present the annual audit report to you.
Good evening, Mr. Conway.
Good evening. Taking the mask off because I suspect you probably have a difficult time hearing me with it on.
Not a problem.
May have a difficult time with it off, so if you can't hear me, holler, please. Again, my name is Frank Conroy. I'm a shareholder and partner with Foxburg and Company, Certified Public Accountants. We were engaged to do the annual audit for the fiscal year ended September thirty, twenty twenty. And I had met with
So would you want to say your name and your address, please, for the record?
The address?
Yes, sir.
One two zero zero one North Central Expressway, Suite five hundred, Dallas, Texas.
Thank you.
Very good. I didn't realize I needed to do that. Thank you.
Yeah, that's what a record, the record who wants to speak and that.
Sure, I'm fine. Again. Okay. Well, nowadays with working at home, I'm not sure that'll work, but you want the home address too, just in case. Anyway, I got distracted there by the, the address thing. What I started to say was I met last week with your committee, your finance committee, to deliver the governance letter, the management comments and the draft of the report to go over it in a little bit more detail than perhaps we might cover this evening. But I will hit on some of the highlights here and then, of course, open it up to questions. First of which, I'm happy to say that the, the audit report, which is on page five and six of the comprehensive annual financial report is a clean opinion or unmodified or unqualified opinion. Clean is a generic term, just to make it clear that we're issuing an opinion that indicates that the users of the financial statements can rely on it to be free of material misstatement. I expand a little bit on that concept. Materiality is a judgment. And by that, one user may, may find the level of materiality be completely different than, than we may have. But we're inclined to believe that if there are any misstatements within the financial statements, they would not negatively impact the user's beliefs or conclusions relative to financial positions or results of operations. Having said that, I'd like to step back and kind of go over very briefly the governance letter. We're required by generally accepted auditing standards and governmental auditing standards to communicate to those charged with governance, which is essentially the council and management. The governance letter that we provided last week, and I believe you all have a copy of, has various sections. The first of which is the scope and timing. The most significant reference point there is to our engagement letter, which was dated November second, twenty twenty. That essentially lays out what we're supposed to do and conclusions that we're supposed to come to or hopefully come to. In addition to that, we cover our compliance with professional ethics. We discuss significant accounting policies, estimates and disclosures. We inform you if we had any difficulties encountered during the course of the audit and whether resolved or not. We communicate to you the adjustments that were developed during the course of the audit. And I'd like to expand upon that because there's, there's multiple number of pages, including that governance letter. As I discussed with the finance committee last week, the better part of those adjustments are referenced by PBC, which is an acronym that we use for Prepared by Client. And the reason there's so many of those is because at some point we have to cut off the trial balance and essentially determine a, a target that's not going to move, knowing that staff is still working on analyzing and adjusting certain things, for example, sales tax receivables. So in order for them to be able to coordinate with us, they develop these entries, they post them to their trial balance, we post it to our trial balance, it gets included in the report. I don't want to give the impression that this is a negative result of the, the work of your staff. It's just a timing issue. Okay, so the better part of the adjustments that are being reported in that, in that governance letter are PBC entries. Also included in, in attached to that governance letter is a copy of the management representation letter that we ask management to sign. In a nutshell, essentially that's just documenting and writing certain assertions that they give, they make to us during the course of the audit. For example, that they've given us full access to any records that we want to be able to look at to, to develop our opinions and so on. I'm happy to say there were no, no disagreements with, with management. Happy to say that as far as we know of, there was no, what we refer to as opinion shopping or consultation with other accountants. To elaborate on what that point might be is if there's a, an accounting issue that is difficult or, or or has optional applications. It's, it could be that members of management may go out and consult with other accountants, hoping to get a, an opinion or a conclusion that would, would be more favorable. And again, as far as we're aware, there was none of that going on. Coming back to the significant account, accounting policies, estimates and disclosures. The financial statements embedded within your financials are numerous estimates. For example, there's an estimate for uncollectible receivables. There's an estimate on depreciation. Depreciation expense by itself is an estimate driven by an estimate of what the useful life of the asset is being depreciated. There's an estimate in the financials for compensated absences, which is developed based on a combination of variables, including pay rates, years of service, accumulated hours that have not been taken for vacation or sick leave, consistent with your policy on what you do relative to whether you're going to pay for those hours if somebody leaves or not. There's also an estimate in here for other pension and employee benefit or other post-employment benefits and, and the pension liability. In my opinion, and again, this is an opinion, somebody else may see it differently, the most significant estimate as well as disclosure in your financial statements is relative to your pension liability. And the reason I'm, I come to that conclusion is because there are so many variables, some of which you have control over, some of which you do not, that impact the estimate of what your liability on your pension might be. And to expand on that, if you look at page fifty-seven of the report, you'll see where we're required to disclose the impact on a change in the assumed return rate or discount rate that the pension assets are going to return. The assumed rate is six point seven five percent. And at that rate, your pension liability is considerably a little better than five hundred ninety-six thousand. If the performance rate were to decrease by one percent, the liability would increase to about one point six million. If you were to get one percentage point better return than the six point seven five, your, your liability would actually swing to being an asset. You would be overfunded by about two hundred and fifty-three thousand. So you can see the impact that, that one percentage point in the estimated return rate has on pension liability. Another point that I come to relative to that is that I believe that there's some complexity involved in, in estimating the pension liability and its significant material to the financial statements as a whole. So those are kind of some of the factors that I take into consideration.
Sir, could you repeat that last couple of lines? It was hard to hear what you were saying.
Okay, what I was saying is that part of the reason that I conclude that the pension liability is the most significant estimate and disclosure is because of the complexity and the variables, as well as the materiality to the financial statements as a whole. Again, this is judgment. Somebody else may see it differently. They may think your depreciation expense, for example, might be the most significant estimate. Perhaps if I can get a little closer. Okay.
We've got people listening in?
Yes.
I just want to make sure they're able to. Yes, sir. Thank you.
In addition to the actual pension liability, there's also some other accounting jargon in there that is driven by the pension liability. They're called deferred outflows and deferred inflows. And they arise due to the, the difference between the pensions accounting year and the city's accounting year. The, the pension is accounted for on a calendar year basis. And of course, the city's financial statement are based on the year ended September thirty. And so some of the expenses and some of the inflows and outflows relative to your pension get deferred for financial accounting presentation purposes. And that becomes more and more complex every year because there's a new layer for twenty sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen going forward. So again, I think that, that complexity just adds a little bit more difficulty in this area. And then to expand upon that point, last year when we delivered the audit report, we had a few management comments. The only one of those that we did not clear up this year was relative to the staff's ability to develop the adjustments for the deferred inflows and deferred outflows independent without my input. And last year I promised that I was going to get with the council and, or not council, staff and help them work their way through how to do that. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic and the social distancing and such, we never did find time to get, get that taken care of. So as a result of not clearing that up, I'm required to include that in the comments again this year. The pension disclosure is also supported by exhibit B two, which is on page sorry, it's real small. Seventy-one and seventy-two of the report. And there's a particular point relative to that on page seventy-two where it shows the relative amount of pension assets, the pension liability. And specifically, for example, for year ended in this calendar year, twenty nineteen, you were ninety-one point oh two percent funded. Okay. I did a little bit of research to kind of compare that to some other municipalities in the area. And the reason I did that is partly because I think some people may get a little bit concerned when they hear that it's not fully funded. Ninety-one and, or ninety percent and better is really pretty good compared to what I've seen historically, especially if you were to go to states like California Connecticut or New Jersey or Illinois or whatever. And in addition, because there's multiple years presented here in the report, you can see the trend is if you go back to twenty fourteen, you were eighty-six point seven four percent funded. Twenty fifteen, eighty-two point two six percent. Twenty sixteen, eighty-three point seven four. Twenty seventeen, eighty-nine point nine. Twenty eighteen, eighty-three point eight. Now you're ninety-one percent. So the trend is positive in that regard. And as I said, I went and looked just out of comparison. I do audits for some other cities and also some other cities post their audit reports online, so you can look at those. For example, Caro, City of Carrollton, theirs range from ninety-seven point nine four in twenty fourteen to ninety-eight point three, three percent in twenty nineteen. So they're a little bit better in the context of being fully funded than the town of Sunnyvale. But again, I don't consider that to be a big red flag of a big concern.
So let me ask you a question. I know we are pretty good. I get that. What is the financial liability for the town? For that nine percentage? Do we need to make that up every year? How does that?
Well, again, there's, there's multiple variables that come into play that impact the, whether liability increases or decreases over a year's time. One of them is pay rates, number of employees, investment return, the amount of funding that you actually bill into your budget and actually remit to TMRS. All those things come into play. In recent years, investment performance has been pretty good despite the pandemic, for example. The markets have done better than, than I think everybody would have expected. And as a result, you've had a positive impact on your pension relative to investment returns. So that's something you don't control. And if we were to have a severely negative downturn in the market, your liability, all of the things being equal, is going to go up.
So again, so the nine percentage difference, ninety-one to hundred, do we need to make that up every year?
No, no, not at all. It's something that needs to be taken into consideration in the context of doing your annual budget. And you may very well want to go to the point of projecting based on the numbers that, that you're getting from TMRS about what the expected annual return is. What percentage of payroll do you need to fund in order to maintain that, that ninety-one or better funding or even improve upon if that's your objective?
And that's actually what we did last year. We funded a little bit higher. So we're required a certain percentage and the actuaries from TMRS let us know that. But we actually budgeted slightly above that last year. And as Frank told you, for the last several years, we've improved our position year over year and are getting a higher and higher percentage of funding. What was it way back in, you said twenty fourteen, you were in the eighties?
Twenty fourteen, you were about eighty-six point seven four, if I'm reading it correctly here.
So we've been closing the gap on that just by slightly overfunding every year.
What is a slightly overfunds? Can you, from the times of percentage or numbers or something?
It's a percentage and we, I think we were supposed to fund twelve percent. We did twelve point.
Yes, and TMRS sends us just a baseline every year that would meet our two to one match. And twelve percent is what it was in the prior year. And we, we did twelve point two one percent because we could, we were trying to kind of close that cap and keep it at least constant. So TMRS will tell you what you need to stay. I guess status quo would be the word with your pay rates and your staffing. And then you make the decision whether you want to pay a higher rate or you can even pay a lump sum if you want to, to close that gap.
Liz, I'm sure it's in here, but can you tell me the actual number? What is the actual dollar amount gap?
Of the liability?
Yeah.
Okay, well, essentially it's that five hundred and ninety-six thousand dollar number.
Yeah, it depends upon the discount rate. That's what he was, that's why it's something that he's saying is an estimate because the discount rate just determines what that amount is. But at six point five, that's what the number would be.
Five hundred thousand dollars.
Six point seven.
Six hundred thousand, five ninety-six.
Five ninety-six, okay.
And again, another thing you have to take into consideration, there's a time lag relative to this information because this is based on twelve thirty-one nineteen numbers. Twelve thirty-one twenties numbers are probably out now and you, you should be getting your letter from TMRS. I'm going to say in the next thirty to sixty days, that will, will tell you where you stand as of twelve thirty-one twenty.
Based on your experience, are there towns that are fully funded? Is that?
Well, I was sharing, I was sharing that with the finance committee last week. I haven't seen that hardly ever. And as a result, I have a bias in my mind that it's always a liability. And as coincidence would have it, I was working on an audit this year that sure enough, theirs was twelve thousand dollars positive. And I almost made the mistake of recording it as a twelve thousand dollar liability. Now, the irony of that, of course, you can pick up on this with it being twelve thousand dollars. It's relatively small number either way. So we're talking about a small municipality with a relatively small staff and low payrolls, all things considered. So it would be very easy for that, for that circumstance to swing positive or negative on an annual basis. They just don't have a big liability at all at this point. And of course, yours is, is a reasonable size, but if you go to compare it to some other municipalities around the metroplex, you're going to find that your number is relatively small compared to some of those.
Thank you.
So I think to expand on the point a little bit further is that I draw a lot of attention to this, but I don't intend for it to be an alarming situation. That's not, not why I'm bringing your attention to that. I just want you to be aware of it. The biggest thing that you can't control is the return on investment. And so that would be the thing that I would keep my eye on as a, as a red flag that if the markets turn sour, then all of the things being equal, you're going to have to find other ways to fund additional portions or the liability is going to grow.
Counsel, are you good with that, that particular topic? And there may be additional questions. Continue, sir.
Well, that's pretty much all I have unless you have other things you'd like to probe right now.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to request the finance, the audit subcommittee, Mr. Eldridge and Mr. Freeman, if you have any comments, you may please enlighten the council.
No, I'll, I'll say my, my comment after going through this was that, you know, the fact that that was our biggest concern and came on last year, this was the first year for them to take back over after we had someone else doing it. There were some, you know, trying to find numbers and whatnot. Those problems went away. I mean, it seems like everything's pretty much, it was literally this. And this is something that we have little to no control over. And we can make slight funding adjustments here and slight funding adjustments there as we see fit, but it's assumptions, it's market driven. I mean, if we say six and a half this year and it goes down six percent, then you're twelve and a half off of your annual assumption. But I mean, it just, it's such a moving number that if that was the only issue that we had and we had no actual issues with accounting or any issues with, you know, how we did things, I felt really good about it. I really did. I mean, like I said, that, that is something that you really can't control. We're probably doing, you know, if I would say better than most would probably be what I would think of ninety-one percent funded. So.
You feel good, I'm working.
Same town staff did amazing. I think this shows their conviction throughout the year, putting hard work in, right? Because they made this thing. Audits are easier, right? When town staff puts in the, right? When all the numbers are crossed, all the Ts are crossed, sometimes the Is are dotted, right? It makes these kind of things easier. And it shows when the only thing that pops up is something that's always made liability, right? And this is, I mean, me and John can talk about this. Pensions are liable for everybody. It's kind of why they're getting out of it, right? Because there's so many factors going to it, right? So it's always going to be kind of an issue. You've got to keep your finger on it. So this just shows that we're doing really well as a town.
Okay, good. Thanks. Thanks, sir.
I'd like to expand on that point because I spent a lot of time talking about the pension liability and it may come across like that's the only liability you have in your financial statements. And I, I don't want to leave that impression. You have plenty of bonded debt, for example. Those are liabilities in the financial statements. And council and management has to, has to budget for it and, and forecast and, and prepare to fund paying back those liabilities as well. And some of those are considerably larger than your pension liability, but you have a lot more control over, over that piece of the funding. You're well aware, based on your amortization schedules, what your debt service requirement is on an annual basis. And as long as you build it into your budget and collect enough property taxes and sales taxes and such, you'll have the cash flows to fund that. Pension liability, as, as Mr. Freeman and Mr. Eldridge elaborated, there are, there are elements out there you don't control.
Understood. Thanks, sir.
My pleasure.
So if you don't mind, take a seat. I'm going to take public comments. Then I may come back to you if council has more questions.
Very good. Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, council, this is the time for public comments. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council on this item, item number eight, you may do so. If you are joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. No one is coming forward from the chamber. Erica, anyone raising their hands?
No, sir.
No hands raised, so I'm going to close the public comments. Council, are there any questions for staff or the auditor? Okay, if there are none, I call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Eldridge to approve item number eight as presented.
Second.
Second by Mr. Freeman. So motion made by Mr. Eldridge and seconded by Freeman to approve item number eight. Is that good enough, Brenda, or do I need to make? Okay. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed, seven oh. Thank you, sir, for being here. Liz and your colleagues appreciate all the work you do. This is nothing new for me, at least. I have seen this year, year on, year over year. Appreciate all the hard work you do to keep this clean. I know it's not easy. It's a lot of digits and numbers and details. You always kept up straight, so thank you so much for that. Thank you. I appreciate you. Okay, moving on to item number eight. That is discuss, consider and act upon resolution. Twenty, I, I meant to say six. I did, I did. I don't know which number I said. Okay, item number six, discuss, consider and act upon resolution twenty-one dash seventeen, approving a development and facilities agreement between the Town of Sunnyvale and TF Stony Creek LP regarding the provision of public improvements subsequent to the recordation of the final plat for Stony Creek Phase four B. Mr. Goff, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Looking nice in those glasses.
Thank you so much. Stony Creek Phase four B is the eighty-eight lot portion of the neighborhood that's currently under construction just north of Phase four A along the north side of Vance Road. The final plat for Phase four B was approved in August of twenty nineteen. And as is customary, the final plat has not been filed pending completion of all of the public infrastructure. And until it's filed, lots cannot be sold and permits cannot be issued for any of the homes in the subdivision. At this time, all essential infrastructure is in place. This includes the streets and all of the utilities serving the homes. The only outstanding infrastructure is the hike and bike trail, some of the sidewalks and some associated landscaping next to the sidewalks and the trail. The developer has indicated that they've run into some delays in constructing the trail due to its location in the floodplain and the frequent rain and other inclement weather over the winter. Staff and developer have been discussing plans to move forward with constructing of those improvements. And the developer intends to start construction soon and plans to and plans to be complete with those by December 31st of 2021. The developer is requesting that we enter into a development agreement with them that would allow for the final plat to be recorded so that they can start home construction while they finish out these remaining improvements. Specifically, the development agreement would allow for the issuance of up to 44 building permits. So that's half of the lots, half of the lots would not be able to be built on until the improvements are in place. And it would require the hike and bike trail and other sidewalks and landscaping to be completed by the end of the year, as they've, as they've indicated. Additionally, there's a portion of the trail along 10 lots that front Talbot and Suncrest Way where the trail runs and by the street, so in front of the house next to the street. And in those, on those 10 lots, the development agreement would allow for the trail to be constructed by the builder at the time of home construction as opposed to before. And that's merely so the trail is not damaged during the home construction process. This is similar to how sidewalks get built in subdivision. The sidewalks are typically built by the builder at the time of construction for the same reason. So to be able to do this, the developer is required to place funding equal to 110% of the estimated construction cost into an escrow account. That 110% number is, is a percentage that's set by the UDO. And the construction amount has to be signed off on by town staff. So we didn't say what that is. And if the improvements are not complete by December 31st, then the town could access that escrow funds to hire someone to make the improvements ourselves. And so, you know, we think this provides some flexibility to developer while still providing a way to make sure the improvements get constructed. And so we recommend approval. I've been answering questions.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. I'm going to open up for public comments. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council on item number six, you may come forward. If you are joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. No one is coming forward from the chamber. Erica, anyone raising their hand?
No, sir.
No hands raised, so I'm going to close the public comments. Counsel, are there any questions or discussions on item number six?
Mayor, I'll, I'll go.
Mr. Allen, good evening, sir.
We've been bid before on final plats where things were funded to the fullest extent possible. And with construction costs going at the way they are now, how do we know that 110% is actually going to fund this? And again, we got bid on this in the past in the last 10 or 15 years. Doesn't seem like that that's enough to fund this project. What happens at the end of this if it's not enough? Where's the liability to the developer at?
So again, staff gets to approve what that funding amount is. So we'd make sure that there's, you know, an escalation factor that we're confident that if at the beginning of next year, there would be, what we believe would be sufficient funding to construct the improvements. But at the end of the day, if there is not enough money in the escrow account, the development agreement also gives the town the ability to place liens on any of the properties that are owned by the developer to recoup any of that extra cost.
Do we have any history of putting a lien on a property? Have we ever succeeded in that one? Has somebody done it? I know that maybe. And we've got a new staff.
We have the ability to, I don't know if we have.
It seems to me that, you know, I don't, I don't know how we word this, but it seems to me that it would be better to word this somehow that they're contractually, that they're fully obligated to the cost, whatever that cost is. Because construction costs are incredibly escalating right now. So I don't know, a builder won't even give you a bid outside of seven days because the wood's going up so rapidly right now. So that's a little bit of a concern for me.
The agreement does say that they're required to construct it. The only reason that the town would construct it is if they have defaulted on their obligation. At that point, they would still own at least 44 lots within the subdivision because this has to be done by that point. And so the security that we have is, and the way that I, and I drafted it. So I drafted it to provide the best security that I could for us. The UDO sets the 110% number. So if, if council felt like that wasn't adequate, that would require an amendment to the UDO. So this, this agreement is called for specifically by the UDO. And it says if they want to record the plat before they construct the improvements, this development agreement is required. And so I drafted it based on the language in the UDO. I did add the ability to place the lien on the remaining lots. And that's the typical security. I think the question is, is the 110% insufficient? You know, what, what does the council think about that?
I think that's the 110% is, is the issue I have a little bit of a problem with.
And that is set by ordinance.
So we're stuck by the ordinance on that, is what we were saying?
That, unless you want to amend the ordinance, yes.
A 110 ceiling or 110 minimum or 110 just a number?
It says it's 110%.
So it doesn't say minimum or maximum?
No.
110 is kind of the first line of defense. And then if it's still, and that's the amount of money they put in escrow.
And that's based on staff review too.
But then if it exceeds that, then we have this ability, it says in the contract. Okay, if it exceeds the 110, say it's another 10%, we can place a lien on the rest of the lots to recoup that money. So we kind of have a two-fold, two gates.
And I just want to make a comment here. There's not a developer that wants to have a lien against this property. That's, that's leverage that we've got. So this, this, this is covered. I don't care if it was 200%. We can still argue that 200% is not enough. We're going to get 110% in escrow in the bank before they do anything. And then if it ends up that we have to contract with somebody to do the work, then if it costs more than that 110%, we go lien their properties. And there's not a contractor that wants to do that.
I'll tell you, here's where, here's where I think we are. We have a, we have a developer who wants to build 80 houses. And we're only saying that, hey, we're going to let you build 40. It doesn't make a difference what that construction cost is, 110, 120, 140. They're going to pass that off to their buyer at the end of the day. Them not being able to build on that last 40, that's what we got. So until everything gets done to our satisfaction, regardless of what the actual construction cost is, because they're just putting that into an escrow account, right? They're going to use that money, but if it goes over, they're still going to take money out of their pocket because regardless of what those costs are, they're passing that on to buyer. What we have is if they don't, if they don't actually finish the trail the way we want it, then we can say you don't get to build on the other 40 because they have to come back to us for reapproval.
And also, this is Starwood and they have other phases that they own. So we're not only talking about this phase. They have more future phases that they have to deal with us on. So it's not like, you know, a small developer and one little pocket of houses. This is, you know, a huge developer that has many phases and several more to come, so.
I just want to say, I appreciate where Mr. Allen's coming from. He's, he's right. We have been burned before in the past. But having dealt with these kinds of things before, I think that we've got a pretty rock solid plan put together here that is going to move forward. And, you know, I was kind of thinking, well, wait a minute. Why don't we get the sidewalks in because, or the trails in? Because a lot of times we have trails to nowhere. Because it was phased development and all that. People complain, oh, you know, I can walk down to the, you know, a half mile on a sidewalk and to either end of the sidewalk and walk into mud because the rest of the trail's not there. So I'm thinking, well, maybe we ought to go ahead and have them put it in. Except it'll end up getting all torn up whenever they do the construction on the houses. So that doesn't make sense. So this to me is probably one of the best working. And again, totally appreciated from, from where Member Allen's coming from because we have run into this problem before. I don't think we've ever put an agreement together like this before. Thank you, Brenda.
Yeah, and I get that and I appreciate that. Maybe we're covered. I guess that's why I asked that question because we did get burnt by Stony Creek Development on a, another piece of concrete that's not going to be adequate. The 40,000 or whatever, we're only probably $150,000 off on that. So here's the what if. In six months, the economy tanks and they quit building and they walk off and they default. And Stony Creek has defaulted before. I'm not saying that they will this time. What can we do with the lien on that property that we have? How do we recoup our money out of a lien if that happens? And I know this is, this is like down the rabbit hole. I get it a little bit, but we, that's happened to us before in Stony Creek. So that's the reason I'm asking.
So I think you have to look at what the magnitude of the risk would be. At that point, we would have 110% of the construction cost in escrow. And our, our risk would be the cost for the town to construct the improvements above that 110%.
But that lien's always against the property. So when the property sells, we will get the money back. It might be 10 years.
That's right.
But we will get that money back.
And any portion of the property at that point that's sold would, absent lots conveyed to builders at that point, would still be in the developer's name. And the lien would, would be there and have to be, no lender, no title company. I mean, it, it's recorded and it shows up and it has to be satisfied.
Thanks, Brenda. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Think you have a question?
So just curious, why, why would we grant it? Why not make them improve it first?
Yeah, I, I think it's just a matter of, of timing and letting them get, get started while they do, finish up the work on these less essential. And by less essential, I mean, you don't, it's not like it's water or sewer or something that serves the house. It's, it's the extras for the development that can be built concurrently with, with the homes. And if the timing works out, you know, probably right as people are starting to move into the development as, as the first batch of homes are completed, that's when the trail, if, if they abide by the December 31st timeline, would be completed as well. So by the time residents are there, the trail should be completed or pretty close to being completed.
So I was a relatively new council member and when this came up with the previous development. And I did not enjoy the feedback we received because the public amenities were not installed by things we say that are less important. But to our residents, a trail is very important. And so I understand your point, Charles, but I just, I just wonder why, why we even go down this trail and say, hey, the agreement says? And, and I understand from a legal standpoint, Brenda, that there's going to be some things.
I was going to explain.
Yeah, I'm curious.
So normally, the builder always builds the sidewalks. In this particular case, there are trails. It's a trail, not a sidewalk. And trail construction, A, is more expensive. And B, you always put it in after construction so that they don't tear it up during construction. And they will tear it up during construction. And so it's really, you get a better trail that's constructed all at once in a much better condition than you do if you require that it be put in. Because then we have to accept it. And if they tear it up, they'll patch it and we'll have to accept it. And then with regard to the landscape and the hardscape, I'm not sure exactly how much that is. Charles, do you know? I'm looking at the.
Yeah, honestly, I'm less concerned about the landscape because that can, that can ebb and flow. So with what you just said, Brenda, then do we have a problem in our development process? Because it sounds like if you're saying that certain things should not be developed first, but we require it. So is there, should we modify our development process to say, okay, then these things must be done later in, in the process?
So when I first started practicing law, we recorded final plats before construction. Everyone did it. And then I guess Plano was the very first one to not record final plats until after construction of the infrastructure. And I hated that. Because, you know, if it's final plat, I want it recorded. They did that to secure construction of the infrastructure. And, and yet, from a practical standpoint, we, you know, the pendulum swung, swung, went from everybody recording plats before construction to now everybody recording plats after construction. I don't think that's a perfect system yet. And there are some components that you want to wait. If it wasn't a public trail system, they probably wouldn't have come for the landscape and the hardscape. I think that may be more of a convenience. But I think it's the fact that these are trails and not sidewalks.
Yeah, I, I just, I know the past, you weren't here and it was previous people in charge. And so I appreciate that, but I just know that that was not a fun experience to have that kind of public input.
It won't be fun for them either because I won't make it fun.
Can we just add one thing and that kind of got left out was when they first approached Charles and I about doing this agreement, the real issue was the muddy conditions. The trails run behind the homes and in several situations. And it, it's, it's kind of adjacent to floodplain area. And so it just gets really muddy and it's been so rainy that that's what has held up installation of them. So to me, when they first approached me, that was really the primary issue. Charles, do you want to add to that?
Right. And, and it's not just that they're adjacent to the floodplain. It's, it's in the floodplain. We actually walked it with them a few weeks ago. And there's some places where, where the trail is called for on the plans. It's, it's in the middle of a creek bed. There's always standing water there. So when I said that, that staff and developer are working on a plan, some of that is to adjust the location of the trail slightly to pull it a little bit further away from where some of that standing water is so it is more constructible. So there's legitimate reasons that have hold them, held them up from, from being able to construct it before now. And so now they're asking for a little bit of flexibility to, you know, continue and, and see the construction through, but not have it hold up the rest of, of the development.
And, and I have one point as well. So you said that there's this one area that goes by 10 houses. And they're going to wait for, now those 10 houses are part of the 44 that we're approving right now, correct? Because if they're not, then there's no way that this trail can be done by the time the 44 that we've agreed upon are completed. It would already be in the second, which means we would have to approve the second with still more of the trail not being completed, which completely kind of goes against our ideas of being willing to do this, that we actually have some leverage.
So the, the agreement kind of considers the, the two things separately. So the, the 10 lots where the trail runs in front of it, the agreement just puts that responsibility onto the builder. And so that, that portion of the trail would get built whenever those homes develop. The rest of the trail network through this phase, which there's an exhibit in the agreement where the, the 10 lots are shown in green, the rest of the sidewalks and trails that would be required to be completed by December 31st. That's what would be subject to that timeline of, of December 31st. The, the green portion along those 10 could be later than that. And, and we didn't specify which lots those 44 permits are for. It's just 44 permits, whichever lots come forward.
Yeah, could be one of them. Okay. All right, thank you, Charles.
Counsel, are there additional discussions or questions? Mr. Allen?
So let me ask this question. We're going to record, we're going to allow them to record the final plat on all 88 lots. Is there a reason why we can't allow them to record final plat on the 44 they're going to do and hold the final plat till they finish the last 44? I think you touched on that a little bit with what Plano was saying. But is that something we could do now? Or does that go against our UDO or something that we can't do?
So.
So what is this second state? Never mind, I got you. Okay.
That answer question, Mr. Allen? Okay, counsel, are there additional discussions on item number six? Okay, there are no more discussions. I call for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like a motion to approve the items discussed.
Motion made by Mr. Egan.
It's item six, if I remember correctly.
Yes, sir. Motion made by Mr. Egan to approve item number six as presented. Are there additional? You have a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Mr. Freeman. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? There are none, all in favor, signify. There are none. All in favor signify. All opposed. Motion passed seven. Thank you, Charles. Thank you, Brenda. Moving on to item number seven, discuss, consider, and act upon the second reading of ordinance 21-10 and ordinance amending ordinance 20-22, which made appropriations for the support of the Town of San Diego for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020, and ending September 30, 2021, and amended the annual budget of the Town of San Diego for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. Ms. Hopkins, good evening. One more time.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is an annual process that the town goes through to true up some of our numbers as we get into the first six months of our year. Erica, if you go to the next slide and the next one, please. This is the second reading of this ordinance, and these slides were provided at the last meeting. The big takeaway, in my opinion, of this budget amendment is the domain that was connected on the roads. A lot of this funding and a lot of these changes are to provide that domain funding. I can go through these slides, or you can ask specific questions, whatever your pleasure.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. I'm going to open up for public comments. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council, item number seven, you may come forward. If you are joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. Now, when it's coming forward from the chamber, Erica, anyone raising their hand?
No, sir.
No hands raised. We're going to close the public comments. Council, we heard this one time from Phyllis last, last council meeting. Are there additional questions or discussions on item number seven?
Listen, I know we went through all this stuff a lot last time. None of the numbers changed, right? This is literally just a second showing the exact same numbers we had the last time.
That's correct.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, there are no more discussions. I call for a motion, item number seven.
Motion to approve, item number seven.
Motion made by Mr. Eldred to approve, item number seven, as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Regan. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor signify? All opposed. Motion passed seven. This, thank you very much. Moving on to item number nine, mayor and council requests for future staff updates and agenda items. Counsel. Okay, there are none. Moving on to the, item number 10. Can I have a motion recess into executive session pursuant to chapter 551, subchapter D of the Texas Government Code? Counsel, there are three items, item number 10, section 551 dot O 72, deliberations about real property, public works property. Item number 11, section 551 dot O 87, economic development, project DC2, section 12, section 551 dot O 87, economic development, project SJ.
Mayor would like to make a motion to recess into executive session pursuant to chapter 551, subchapter D.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman and second by Mr. Clark to recess into executive session. All in favor signify? All opposed. Motion passed seven. The time is 7:53. We are in executive session. Members of the audience, I do anticipate some actions to be taken as of the executive session. Thanks.
Okay, now time is 8:51. We are back from the executive session. I can confirm that as a result of the executive session, no action needs to be taken on deliberation about real property, public works property and project DC2. Council, do you have a motion on the Economic Development Project SJ Resolution 21-15A?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to deny SJ which is Resolution 21-15A.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman to deny Resolution 21-15A. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Finch. Have you all heard the motion or the additional discussions? All in favor signify. All opposed. Motion passed 7-0. Motion is denied 7-0. Council, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Take a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman, second by Alan to adjourn. All in favor? Motion passed 7-0. Now time is 8:52 and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you staff, thank you council, thank you officer for being here.